Next application is reserved by the Church of Alexandria, application number Z-1512. 654-664 Newark Avenue, the West Side of Alexandria.
Thank you. I'm Pastor Bernard of the Trinity of Alexandria. I represent the Iglesia Cristiana Charismatica, or Christian Charismatic Church, which is a little easier to say. Also, there is a complemento to Jehovah. This church is a pre-existing, not only used, but been bred in areas of the 1990s. It was destruction, it was present location in 1999, and has been stalwart supporter of our area ever since. What we have is an application for a very minor change. We have photographs, which we've had, and I think make it easy to understand what it is we're doing. And if you would have the picture of the sign at the front of the building, if there are any... And, yes. Okay, then we will. But just as a preliminary statement, you will see in the photograph that there's a small parking area. And this is what is about to be closed. We will lose only five parking places, two of which we will regain by removing the building. So that's really the essence of our application, and I would like to call Pastor Bernard Felix as my recipient.
My name is Pastor Bernard Felix. F E I S, that I represent in the church located... F E L I S. I represent the church located at 664 North Avenue, I represent the church.
Pastor Felix, could you give a brief history, very brief history of the church?
Absolutely. We just celebrated our 21st anniversary. Church planted in early 1990s, in 1994, we acquired the building where church currently located, was the former sort of business school. Just some five years later, in 2000, sorry, 1999, after acquiring it in '94, we applied for an expansion project, it was a very prolific project, where we added a second level sanctuary, seated over 600 people. We've been at this location with the current structure, which includes on-site a parking lot, four five spaces underneath the main sanctuary. The first and second floors had ADA compliant bathrooms. There are currently four classrooms, including the nursery, and there's a main sanctuary, and four offices in the office area of the building.
Okay, so that's the current views. And I'm going to show you about Mark as Exhibits 1 and 2, and then he has the credit and the photographs of the building. Could you again, what is demonstrated in this photograph? What is it?
So this is a picture taken from across the street of the church, looking at the left side of the building, particularly where the tech focus, where the actual project, intended project, will mostly focus on. So that is our parking lot, where currently is available to park for our pastor, as we include myself and the office staff. Absolutely.
And so, how many, how many parts do we park in?
We have parking spaces now of five.
And you also, can you tell me what is depicted in picture number two?
Picture number two, we intended to capture what we intend, expect will be the result, the resulting parking in that space, since that will be closed off. What that parking, picture number two shows is that there will be two new spaces that will be created right in front of the building by way of removal of parking driveway. So two spaces are regained outside.
And did you take these photographs?
Yes, I did.
And are they true, or are they depictions of what is shown there?
Absolutely, yes.
And now you brought, now, if this application is running, tell me what is...
Considering that we have several needs in the church, our overall overarching desire is to be able to better accommodate and better serve the clients of the church who present attending the congregation. And so, the congregation has been by nickel church for many years. What we've been doing is we've been holding services in translation, live translation. Speakers are either, for many years, were simultaneously employed in public, or it was being done till we can hear it in English, without hearing service in English language. And so, doing this, this is a little bit destructive, a little bit difficult to manage. And so, became a desire of our nature that we would consider holding a simultaneous sanctuary, a simultaneous sanctuary, where they can do English language, English only service every place, while the Spanish service is going upstairs. Also, it was our desire to be able to re-allocate and better serve in more modernized classrooms, spaces for the children. So, we wanted to expand from existing classrooms to six, sorry, four existing classrooms to six classrooms, in addition to the nursery, resized, or recently allocated for the children. As well as, we wanted to, because there was insufficient office space, it was our desire to be able to accommodate better our offices. And so, to that end, we found that by reassessing the space underneath the parking lot and sacrificing the five spaces, we thought that was very minimal to be able to acquire, achieve all the things that we want to be able to gain by way of basically closing that off and using that space for offices, as well as additional classroom and small chapel.
And I'm going to show you what Mark does, exhibit three, which is... Diagram, and can you tell me what this is?
Yes, the layout there shows what the general area of the proposed planning will be. And the first main area, what we're excited about, is the chapel, which will hold daily services on Sundays. It will also serve, as you can imagine, we had a very large sanctuary upstairs. During the week, we had meetings that indicate that the tenants are probably only less than 100 at a time. So, needing to heat and cool that large sanctuary for the smaller meeting gatherings was something that we thought was not cost-effective, obviously. So, this new chapel, which will be able to provide for us a cost-effective alternative to using the heat and cool of that large chapel throughout the week, where there are going to be smaller groups that need to meet. Also, the nurseries and classrooms on the middle section, they are highlighted. They represent an interest by two, two additional classrooms, and larger and more modernized classroom nursing space for the children. And the offices, which were four, located in the office, and the building are now on the smaller end of the building, the parking lot, but they are more roomier spaces for us to be able to house the staff that we have to manage on a daily basis. So, that's basically the build that diagram is out for us.
And number four, which is a smaller image of what we have on the board poster board, what...
That is an artist rendition of what we need to submit the building to British Project Look Like, based on the drawings provided just by the architect. Basically, highlights that will be consistent in terms of the current structural or physical features of the building throughout. When you add trees and shrubs, because we are now gaining some green areas as a result of the wood that blacked out in the front areas, we really want to be sure that the building is consistent with the rest of our efforts to maintain a very soft and green looking performance of the building for operations, and to be consistent with us, or whatever else is the goal of the label as well.
And I'd also like to point that what I marked is in the top. And can you tell me what that is?
That is a aerial view of parking areas that are currently available to Christians, or visitors of the church on any given Sunday. There are three areas that are highlighted. For many years, they've joined a wonderful relationship with two meaningful businesses. One of them being Father Richard Sanloco, right across the street from the church. He is a lot of the church, uses various spaces on his property. It's a parking space against the back, and he's available for use on Sundays. And he also has a very friendly and grateful relationship with former Milton, and they have now 75 plus parking spaces along the right side of the building, the parking lot, which is adjacent along the side of the submitted lockbusters, and in the rear of their parking lot. And the church itself has its own proper parking lot, which a few years ago we acquired, it was a rundown building, abandoned. We took that property and converted it to a very beautiful shrub line parking lot, which I would have had to do in that area, as well as added 21 more parking spaces, including the handicap space for the clients of our church on the main street.
And finally, I would show you the photographs, item Mark is six, seven. And can you tell me what that is?
Yes, six, which is the picture on the top, is a picture of, from across the street, our parking lot, the one that we replaced. And so, that's 21 spaces there. And picture number seven, at the bottom, is a parking lot, is a picture of former Milton's parking lot, standing in the first of our spaces, which all went to the rear, and rations to the right.
And who took these?
I took those.
They're true, and I can identify some of the pictures that you shared here, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Now, you said that there are 21 places in your waiting place lot. Are you also able to stack park?
Yes, we are able to stack park on that cover when necessary.
And how often has that occurred?
Very rarely, but absolutely able to stack park, although we do know that we can't anymore, to stack park.
So, in addition, on Sundays, are the businesses open around the church?
No, Sundays are the most, all of us are Sunday night.
And therefore, what happens for the street park?
Oh, there's, uh, street parking is available to us because the businesses are closed, many businesses are closed in that area, obviously, the street parking is available for operations, as well as in the evenings, during times of, some of our evening services, because they're also closed in the evenings, so we're able to use the street park.
And so, now, just to let you know, you're the editor of services at that point?
Yes, I am.
You are in fact?
I am.
And you're there, and you include services at that point?
That's right.
And are you familiar with the parking issues of your commissioners?
Uh, yes.
And has parking ever been a problem?
Has not been a problem, at all.
And in fact, what do you find in terms of people coming to that church? Do they come by whole families in one car?
Yes, entire family come in one car. Culture of the church is one where it's very cooperative and very... We just, you know, people are a little carpool together, they'll pick up other families, members of the church, they will carpool together to ride in church, something with transportation, and a bus that stops right in front of the church, which will also help to be one of our employees as well. So that's been a gracious opportunity I've been doing as well.
Thank you. If you have any questions, you must ask a question.
Thank you, Pastor. The nursery and classroom area. This is, I'm looking also at this page, is this also only operation on Sundays? Or is this a weekly day-to-day operation?
It's not, it is not operational day-to-day, it is only open on Sundays and on Friday evenings.
The offices, how much staff do you, the employer, or are there on a normal basis?
On a daily, on a daily basis, in the office, or regular, normal office hours or so, three, five minutes, who are in the office, and two of them are temporarily employees. Senior pastor also have an office at the church, but they're not there for the main office hours. And that's it.
Thank you. I have a question. What is your maximum capacity of people at the existing building?
The existing building, I want to say, is just over 600, short of that number, I'm sorry. The main sanctuaries were...
At any one given time, what's the amount, the maximum amount of people that you will put in there on a normal basis?
So, I believe the maximum amount of people that are permitted to be in that property is almost 600. That's not the case, but yes, it's over 600 people. I want to say 650, I'm sure.
I'd like to know exactly what you're servicing today. No, you tend to, I want to know, what is it you're servicing today?
We're servicing over 500 members, I shouldn't say members, should say visitors, on a weekly basis for Sunday services. And there are about 100 children who also attend the church.
Okay, now, in addition, how many more are you going to service?
We are actually not anticipating, if the intention is to allocate, reassess the space with existing parishioners, not serving. We intend to grow from this, we have many tenants who are upstairs, who are hearing the services in this manner, and so we want to be able to, sorry, invite the services by means of we have to be able to give them exclusively in this manner, and so we're going to allocate downstairs.
So what you're looking to do, basically, is not so much grow, it's more to accommodate the size, is that accommodation?
Yes.
Okay.
The starting bonus factor, they're not as many as...
They are open, I believe, we are starting services, we get to the service by about 10:00 AM, 10:30, we don't have prayer service, there's a session, so it's a full prayer first. And then, I think that's, I think it's just beginning to open. But again, we have, when it comes to that, we have assigned spaces that are able to be used. So that's, they're not, the other businesses are there.
Other questions, okay. I have a question, some questions, regarding the local gas station. Yes, so it doesn't open on Sunday, or do you want to find kids, something like that? Do you have any questions?
Yes, so the local gas station is open to operate, but our part on the premises is managing to keep our business. And so, we are able to park on the side of the rear, and it's not a problem, so again, on Sundays, although there are other opportunities of services.
I have a question. A page G100 of your drawings, it shows second floor. But that showing seats in, like, on the third floor, rendering that full chapel, which doesn't...
That's my, that's my question for day management. That's a decision I'm trying to make, and I think, and if you have a question for that, I guess, because I turned it over, I'm next to him, that's all. That's it? Then I'd like to call my next question.
Yes, I do. James, or by the way, I'm sure you have seen the... Thank you.
So, there was a question, can I answer that, is that there's no detail on the second floor?
Yes, yeah, I'm trying to figure out. Please, we need to draw that, you know, there's no change proposed to that. So, the existing capacity of the second floor worship space has remained unchanged. Basically, it draws up the application, as you're facing in front of the building, in that lower left side, is where the parking is of the building. So, the application essentially is to enclose that area, zero change to the second level of the building.
My question is, as general, if there are people there, I was just curious, that's why you have... That's fine, and there is no issue with it not being there, but there are...
Absolutely, there's still, yes. That, that means that being worship space on the second floor, and the downstairs, as I was stating, is a small existing chapel, which is rent a showman pay. This would increase any of the showman area.
And could you explain to the commissioners, what is it that that drawing we're intending to do with this application, this front?
Well, the application is requested is to eliminate the five cars that parked under the left side of the building, to enclose that area, and then to rearrange the ground floor, so that the office area, which is currently on the right side of the ground floor, will move to the left side in the formal parking area. Then there'd be an English-only chapel built on the first floor, as well as the classrooms in the space. That's the, that's the application in a nutshell. From the original approval of the church on the site, with the five cars that they had there, after that, they acquired property on the way away, and added additional parking. So actually, they actually improved their parking after the building was built. So the removal of the five is certainly kind of minimal, in terms of their need, the elimination of the five hundred of the building, is a small reduction of parking. And as the pastor had stated, once they close that driveway, they can add two of those right back in front of the building. So we're really losing three cars. The, just the application, zoning information is all on the first page of our drawings, on the upper left corner. They're basically all existing lock conditions, and reduction of the under facility parking. I can go along with the board members, or my... Any more questions?
Are there any questions?
Are there any questions regarding the existing, the existing permitted and existing zoning information on that property?
Okay.
And Jim, just to specify, the landscaping that they intended to write in is all going to be just a continuation of what actual uses of this plan, is that right?
Yes, now, it's right now, the right half of the ground floor has, low in front of it. The left side, as we enclose that, we can add additional landscaping to follow that in the building, or so. In this case, we could increase the length of the landscaping.
I'm sorry, I said, I believe we're friends with various... I shouldn't call, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but then I don't have any.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rob, let's go back to landscaping, I don't see any landscape plans on the drawings. No, we don't have it, but we could both provide those. Again, the right side of the building is a lot in front of it, some landscaping. As we move to the left, once we enclose that area, we'll continue landscaping it closer. I do not have the opportunity to drive past it this Sunday. The right side of the building is existing, is that a true representation of the landscape that's there, or...
No, that shows additional landscaping.
Okay, so that's what you're planning on, correct, adding to the project. Harper Consulting, City Clerk, had a comment also on providing landscaping to the fullest extent possible. Is there any other areas that you think we could add anymore, for instance?
It's really difficult, because the building is essentially on the left property line, and it's on the rear property line. So the only place we can get in landscaping is kind of on that front area. And we will add that in, and also, to follow for their approval.
Okay, thank you.
I also would like to point out, and again, I think more easily viewable on what Pastor Marcus, number one, further at the front, it can be seen that all of the area in front of the park is now paved, as I said.
It's paved, and it's a large curb cut there. So eliminating that large curb cut, and moving to...
Additional landscape work.
Correct.
Adam, where were the classrooms before?
The, again, on the right side of the ground floor, they were, under that area, there were four of them, and there was less office space, and the English chapels were smaller.
And I'd like to just sum up by saying that I think this church is for itself, is very beneficial to this community. Wonderful neighbors, as you see, their neighbors are willing to commit their people to park in this area. They are suggesting apparently beneficial activity and the use of this property, and the de minimis reduction of parking, these spaces, when they can be able to add all these other spaces that certainly weren't as complicated or needed at this time. We'll have no neighbor that has a self-employment. And we ask that you please consider our application that granted. And what I want to know is that the thrust of this reconstruction will always be more energy efficient. And again, and better for the friendship, better for each other, better for the congregation, and better for the person. Thank you very much, Pastor.
Are there any members of the audience who wish to testify regarding this application? So, if you step forward in time, just state your name and add this to the script.
May I suggest to stand, if I may? We have great many supporters, oh, I see, thank you, one person would like to speak, but perhaps if I also assist in all those.
Carlos Cenecio. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Carlos Cenecio, Councilman for the Fourth Board of the City of Elizabeth. Sure. Yes, I do. It's 115 Park Road, Elizabeth. I want to make this short and sweet, I first want to start off to thank all of you for your dedication of all the time and hours you spent for your meetings, so I want to make this short and sweet, because I know you probably have so many obligations waiting for you back home. Just want to start off by saying, how I mentioned before, I'm the Councilor of the Board, and the changes that the church is proposing has, in my opinion, no negative impact to the community at all. I was able to go to the church, I saw the plans myself, I took a tour from within, and I was able to see what they currently have, and the plans that they're planning to do. And many of you might know, or maybe you don't, but besides being the Councilor, also pastor, so I completely understand the felt needs of the church, the different complexities that many times church leadership faces to be able to effectively minister, be there for the congregants. So, just want to let everyone know I'm a supporter of this project, simply because it does impact the community in a negative way, and I feel so it would be a blessing to this church. In addition, how was mentioned before, Tampa Jehovah, without question, has been a blessing to our community, blessing to the city of Elizabeth, and our city is a better place because of this church being where it is. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question for the Councilman. First of all, thank you, Councilman, for coming, speaking before the Board tonight. You probably know better than I do, parking is a major issue in the city, in all states, not just exclusively to Elizabeth. Are you comfortable with the plan that they have for the parking of this addition to the church?
I am comfortable, that when they originally told me about it, that was one of my major concerns, and being that it's just five parking spots in the bottom, and it's mainly safe there for the staff that they use during the week, I proposed to them, and it was already on their mind that they were going to use the parking lot that's right across the street that they own to park there during the week. So, that would almost, the needs that they would normally have during the week would be accommodated by the parking lot across the street. If it was a bigger space with more parking spots besides five, then it would definitely be a great concern, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Any more questions?
Are there any other members of the audience who wish to testify? Seeing none. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, as the first witness, as I mentioned, said, the church has been in a position for many years, providing the leadership to the community while worship. The African is proportion building, construction, and renovations only. The African is not proportioned in entirely progress. Although the church is located within a professional office, which makes the church and it is non-conform, churches have been determined by courts to be inherited with the special treatment. Also, they saw the court, although the existing parking spaces are twenty-one, African has made arrangements for additional seventy-five, seventy-five plus spaces across the street, enough to accommodate a church at its full capacity. The proposed one will match the students in new, in five million classrooms, and one more storage classroom, as I'm telling you, there is a vacation.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, pardon?
I concur with my colleague, Pastor. My main concern when I first looked over this application is parking, not fair to the neighbors or anyone else if there was not parking, not even fair to the complication for that. I'm also satisfied that the parking was sufficient. It's certainly a good looking building, and just an extension, I'm happy to see additional landscaping, and I am also okay with the application.
Commissioner, go on.
Mr. Chairman, we're looking at my application, that is, make existing building, existing use, and what they're looking to do is accommodate, not so much more members, but accommodate who's there now, what's the downfall? Okay, they're getting the five spaces. You turn around, and you look across the street, and you see three additional parking locations on three lots that accommodate same amount of people that were there before. Mr. Chairman, I think it's a valid application, make your members more comfortable, better department, I think it's a valid application.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of the application, if you can have me study there, if I can study with you.
I have called them for looking elsewhere to find parking spaces, a lot of churches and a lot of organizations, they tell us that they have a parking space, so I'm very happy to look elsewhere for it.
And in favor of this application.
I'm also in favor of this application.
I like any votes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second the motion.
Motion to approve my, Mr. Castro's second amendment.
Commissioner, you ready?
Aye.
Commissioner Castro?
Aye.
Commissioner Vittalos?
Aye.
Commissioner Stella? Hi. Reverend Dixon?
Aye.
Reverend Vittalos?
Aye.
Reverend Luthin?
Aye.
Thank you so much.